It's seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order the regular session of the City of Hudsonville Commission for December 12, 2023. First item is Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you all please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call for a moment of silence, maybe especially remembering all the conflicts and strife around the world today and how blessed we are to live where we do. That would be the unofficial part of the agenda.
That was a ceremonial opening for the City Commission. I'll let the former mayor pro tem and my good friend Phil close the ceremonial meeting, at which point we will break for, we'll have, I think, a proclamation, then we'll break for, um, for cake. So go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Very much, Mark.
You got the proclamations?
Thanks, Phil.
Brad?
Uh, State Representative Brad Slaw, I think you have some words for us?
I do. Thank you for allowing me to come up. What I have is a special tribute for Melissa as she's retiring from the library.
So, Melissa, why don't you come up?
Yes. You're the only one that's here that's Melissa.
I didn't know what you were gonna do. I'm so impressed.
I don't think that's so impressive. Okay. Anyway, we are excited to be able to celebrate with Melissa the opportunity for her to retire. And after having been in 27 years with the county library, and having been people and willing to do all kinds of interesting things and try new things and do electronic stuff and do all kinds of things that would make a difference for people and the way that they utilize the library. So this is in recognition of your love for books, your love for the community, and willingness to serve. So thank you very much.
I'm so amazed. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Brad, and fair winds and following seas. And Melissa, thank you. At this point, we'll do the oath of office to be given to the three commissioners, two elected, one as appointed, and myself as the city mayor, a formal oath of office, at which point feel free to grab a piece of cake, maybe, Phil, you can maybe cut the cake if you could, and maybe serve us one last time. And then, then we'll formally sit up at the dais and start the official meeting. So if we could just take a moment of break and maybe, are we gonna do it down here on the podium? Clerk? Okay, so we need to...
Please, I'm sorry. All right. So raise your hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the position of Commissioner or Mayor in and for the City of Hudsonville, County of Ottawa, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities. Yes.
I agree.
Dais, we will open the formal City Commission now. Good evening. I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. I will ask if there are any public comments. If you're here from the public and choose to address the dais, please approach the podium.
We have to do roll call first.
Well, okay, we gotta do the roll call for this. That's why I need to... Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Camp?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Now is a moment for public comments. Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items. There are three minutes of City Commission, or four minutes of City Commission regular session of November 14th, minutes of City Commission special dated November 28th, minutes of the City Commission Planning Commission DDA joint November 9th, and minutes of the Terrace Square Advisory Committee meeting dated November 8th. Are there any changes to those minutes as so noted? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to item number six, the November Public Safety Statistical Reports. Would the sergeant please approach? Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. You're welcome. Nice to see you here. Hope everything goes well. Month of November, call wise, was lower than some months, but still pretty decent. The fun parts of last month was the holiday parade. A lot of people were there. It was busy. Bryn and Lindsay did a fantastic job of promoting and getting people there. I had the opportunity to arrest the Grinch and take him to jail. It was a huge success. So we had a lot of fun. Also during the month of November, I was able to attend a training with a whole bunch of other sergeants from area departments, a command presence training. It was very valuable. It was in Grand Rapids. So I learned a lot, took a lot of that away with me. And we took the speed signs out, if you didn't notice, on 32nd. Nolan Patrullier from BPW assisted with getting those down, and we did crunch a few numbers. And as you see, the 85th percentile was 34 and 36. You can't ask for much better numbers than that. So it's fantastic. And if you don't know what the 85th percentiles, that's what their base speed limits on throughout the state. So that's what I have for tonight. It's good to see you all, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Ninety-seven percent of all vehicles are traveling at 40 miles an hour or less on 32nd.
On that section where this...
On that section. It's a wonderful thing. It's much safer.
And I've already noticed, I've noticed just from observation, that I feel like they are picking up just because the speed signs are up there. So...
Well done.
They're a huge tool.
Good work. Any questions for the sergeant? Thank you, Jeff. Moving on to Dave Dahl. You're up, Emergency Management.
So biggest thing for our month as well, as the sergeant just mentioned, was the holiday parade and the tree lighting. Couple things that I wanted to highlight, especially on the tree lighting. Previous years, it hasn't been a big traffic event. We kind of just monitored things. But this year, it was wildly popular. Everybody, everybody and their cousin was there apparently, and so learning from that, we'll have a stronger presence there next year controlling traffic around Cherry Avenue. That's really our big one there. So you can expect this to be something different next year. Hopefully, there are a whole bunch of people there. But overall, I would want to echo what Sergeant Stuckler said. I think the tree lighting and the parade were well planned. Kudos to all the staff here in the office that everything they need to pull that off. I'm looking forward to next year being even better. Those are all the key points. Any questions or comments?
The memo that we got said the attendance was over 10,000 people. Is that correct?
I was counted in one spot, so I didn't make the route, but based on what I saw, sure, I could check into that.
That's astounding. I know there were some traffic concerns and don't think that we are confident that there'll be some lessons learned to be applied next year. We've never done a night parade like this, but it was wildly successful. I think next year will be, will be even better because we'll have some lessons learned to apply. But, you know, make sure your team understands how appreciative we are for them standing out there in the cold at night, taking care of the safety for, for all the participants. So thank you, Dave, and to your team.
I'll pass that along.
Any questions for discussion for Dave? Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Sergeant, or Chief?
Good evening. For the report for the month of November, we had 55 calls for service, which is a typical month lately, but that brings our call total to 589. So we are running way ahead of previous years. And actually, to date now, we're actually over 600, over 610 as of today. So calls continue to be busy. Training was normal, typical. Want to call your attention to item four, which is the personnel update. We are in the process of onboarding our third cadet. So currently, we have one cadet that is already through EMT school, enrolled in the Fighter Academy for January, another cadet that is soon to be enrolled in the Fighter Academy, and then in the process of onboarding another one. So all of a sudden, we are full of cadets, and that's in part to the advertising that we've been doing. So we started early spring, summer, getting the word out there that we're looking for additional people, and that now is coming to fruition. So going forward, we're gonna continue the hardcore preps, getting more people onboard. We just, maybe we'll slow the pace down a little bit because we want to get these through the academy, get them trained, and get them up to speed, and then get a few more. So going very well. So I guess we're kind of seeing the fruits of the labors right now. So we're pretty happy with that, pretty pleased. Any questions on our report?
Any questions or discussion for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Are we gonna move right into the next item?
I think we might as well move right into...
While you're standing there, might as well. The Lucas?
I think you're all pretty aware of what the Lucas is, and I do have Lieutenant Hottemeyer here tonight, who is willing to do a demonstration of it for everybody if you would like.
I would like to see it. Let's do it. He said there's only two minutes, so...
Yeah, do it.
You can volunteer.
No, I'm not volunteering. I'm not dead yet. Why don't you maybe talk to us how we came to have this piece of device?
Right. So when we arrive on scene and somebody is unresponsive, not breathing, no pulse, we call that Class One cardiac arrest. The first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna apply the AED. The AED is the pads on somebody, and that's gonna assess their heart rhythm. When they are in a shockable rhythm, they have no pulse, we are gonna start CPR compressions. That takes staffing, extra people, and it also is very tiresome. The Lucas is a device that will take over doing the compressions for us. So it doesn't take away the AED, doesn't take away ventilations, it's just one of the components. So it is a suction cup that goes down on the chest of the patient, actually adheres itself to the chest, and will lift that chest up, filling in more blood, and then that thrust pressure as it does its compressions. And it's basically continuous as long as it's needed. When the AED calls for a pulse check, we can pause this, do our pulse check or shock, and we can actually shock right through this still being applied on the patient. And then when we need to continue the compressions, just hit a button and keep on going. We've had this demo since August. We've deployed it five times.
So what did we do before?
Manual CPR. We would pretty much take turns, everybody going around. And you started out with doing maybe three minutes each, and by the end of the time, you're doing about 20 seconds to 40 seconds each, because you were just totally exhausted. This can transport right in the ambulance all the way to the hospital. In fact, one of our patients, they kept it on her in the ER. They had one too, but they kept ours on just to continue with the CPR.
So no doubt, it's a tremendous tool that we have in our toolkit right now.
Yeah. Another good tool for us to use.
Any questions, discussion for the dais?
Where did the name, where did the name Lucas come from?
I don't know exactly. Stryker is the one that came up with that, and I'm sure it's an acronym of something somewhere or named after somebody, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, the information was that Stryker is probably named after somebody.
I'm sure it's named after somebody.
I think we talked these details quite a bit on the purchasing and the budget and the grant, all that stuff, so I don't... You've addressed us what, three or four times over the last, since last summer on this, so...
Right. So we tried for the grant a couple different times. We were unsuccessful with that, and this was a non-budgeted item for this year. And working with Andrew and Tyler, we were able to figure out a way to get this paid for this year. So we're very appreciative of that, non-budgeted expense. And with your approval tonight, we'll go forward and purchase this. But yeah, thanks to Andrew and Tyler for working with us and making this happen.
Any questions, discussion? Go ahead.
Chief, got a question.
Yeah.
Where does this particular device ride around? Is it in your truck or...
Nope. This is gonna be in our first response squad, 1371.
Okay.
Yeah. That's really the best. And that's because nighttime, even though I'm probably first on scene during the daytime, nighttime, that's not always the case. And if I happen to be gone, then that valuable tool is in my garage, and it does nobody any good there. So really should stay on the squad. Someday, if we ever see fit to buy a second one, then it would go on my vehicle. But there's enough for me to do when I get on scene daytime, and we have a good enough response, and we can get one or two people to the station, get the squad to come to the scene. By that time, we're doing airway, AED, and even if we start manual compressions, this can take over. So we're confident that's the best way to lay it out to start with.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve purchasing one Lucas 3.1 chest compression system from Stryker and enroll in their maintenance program for a cost of $19,394.74.
Support.
It's been moved as supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Thank you, Sergeant, Chief, and well done. Moving on to item number eight, the financial audit report for 2022-23, Gabriel and Matt Holland. Good to see you again this year, I think. It's all good, isn't it?
Yep, yep. My judgment shows it's an unremarkable audit, which seems like a bad thing, but that's a good thing. Typically exciting news, it's not good news, but it's the financial stuff. So first off, I did put a little PowerPoint in front of, I think, all the commissioners. Just going over some quick highlights of the audit this year. We issued an unmodified opinion again, so we're gonna issue, ideally what we'll issue every year, it's not guaranteed, so congratulations on that. That said, if you don't get one, you'd be hearing from the state pretty regularly on how are you gonna fix this. Besides that, there are no financial control deficiencies, no deficit fund balances, and no budget deficiencies, which is always great to be able to report on. No blood letters will be received from the state there either. As far as the financial highlights go, the governmental funds ended with roughly $5.5 million in fund balance, which is almost $1.4 million increase. The general fund itself ended with $3.8 million in fund balance, about a $400,000 increase, so pretty positive results this year. The total unassigned fund balance is roughly $2 million, which approximates roughly 35% of the annualized expenditures and transfers out. So that's kind of near that GFOA recommendation of 2% of fund balance reserve. Next slide is just a table graph showing how that fund balance has progressed over the last couple, five years, pretty moderate slight growth over the last couple of years. Next was comparative statement and net position. This is just the balance sheet for the most recent two fiscal years. The biggest changes there were just an increase in cash, kind of goes hand in hand with that increase in fund balance. And then, I guess, the one sad news is the net pension liability did the increase in the year with MERS, just due to the timing of how the valuation is done, it's based off the 12/31/2022 MERS valuation, which is probably pretty close to the point where the market was. So it is factoring in kind of that low point in the market. Talk about that in the slides. Next was comparative statement activities, just showing the incoming expenditures for the year. Some of the biggest changes there were the increase in operating grants and contributions due to, I think, there was a FEMA grant for SCBA gear. That was a multi-department grant for member gradually, but the way it's done, it runs all over the city. There's also some other grants that were received from major local streets, I believe, for some realignments of some streets in the city. Property taxes and state revenue change both have been tickling up this year, and that's what we've been seeing about statewide, so that's great. Hopefully, it will continue. Expenditures also increased this year, just due to some of those, the FEMA grants and those other related activities. All net positions still increased. The last table that I had was that net pension liability, showing how it's kind of gone over the past couple of years. Starting with 2019, you guys were about 71% funded, up to almost 80, 85%, and then back down to 73%. That is a snapshot in a moment of time, so it's a lot more up and down just to how the market performance goes. As you can see, the assets have stayed pretty steady with the total pension liability, slightly growing due to that interest cost, which is pretty common to see. So all 74% funded, that's more near the state's warning sign. I think it's about 60% funded and having an ADC or required contribution over 10%. So the state is more near that, so it's always good to know, but always good to pay attention to that. That's all I really had to bring your attention to, but are there any questions? Always willing to...
I just want to, I just want to point out one thing that caught me when I read the draft here, Matt. In the financial highlights, and I'm gonna read it, the city's revenues were $11,49,513, and expenses were $8,869,903, for an increase in net position of $2,179,610. Is that a big net position increase, typical?
Normally, I would say yes. It has seen over the past couple of years, we've been seeing some larger increases in those net positions. Just think some of it's from the COVID funds, the CARES Act, some of that funding coming through, kind of, of planting revenues, letting you kind of build up some reserves there. So I would say traditionally, you asked me five, 10 years ago, I'd say, yeah, that does seem like a large increase, obviously, great building reserves, but I've seen some, some large numbers in the past couple of years, so it's a, it's a good increase to see, but it's nothing too crazy that I worry about.
But it's better to have a net position increase than the other way?
Yeah, it's better to be going up 2 million than down 2 million, to be like, hey, you guys are gonna have to cut spending, or look at cutting, cutting staffing, et cetera. We did see that in the county six, seven years ago, where they had to cut the, almost the fair share of store in one year, because they had $0 in their fund balance in the general fund. So you guys are nowhere near that, and no concerns have been building that healthy fund balance for years, so...
Any questions or discussion from the dais? City Treasurer, have any comments to add to the...
I don't want, I was very pleased Ashley prepared and got ready for the budget. She did an amazing job without finding a instructor here. She was really stepped up and did a great job, so congratulations, Ashley.
It was great. Didn't run into any, any real issues in comparison to prior years, just Ashley here most of the time, so it was, it was good to see how she kind of stepped up there. And Andrew was great to work with too. We started the audit, what was it, your first or second week?
Second week, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the financial audit for 2022-23.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2022-2023 audit report as presented by Matt Holland.
I support that motion.
It's been moved as supported by the Finance Committee. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to the City Treasurer's monthly report for November 2023, and thank you, Matt. Have a great evening, and we'll see you again next year.
We'll do. Hope you have a great evening.
Are you up, are you up for next year? We have to renew that. Is that...
I think I can remember...
Two more years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's probably a...
We got two more years, I think, with you, right? Okay, so we'll see you again.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. God willing.
Okay. Should we start? General fund summary. As you can see, our expenses were slightly higher than our revenues the last month, as expected. Nothing too different there. The next page, revenue summary, we're doing good for the year, $4.3 million out of the $5.5 million expected revenue to date. We're exceeding the previous two years as well. Expenditures, right on track with that. If you see, we're just about $10,000 over the previous year, so hanging in there pretty, pretty well. Investment report, I think what I'll draw your attention to this month is, if you look at the second page, towards the bottom, you'll see maturing. And so I kind of completed all of the maturing CDs. And so what I'm trying to get to is about $400,000 every month maturing for the current year, and then 250 for the following year. So a two-year lead is about the, where you get the best return arc for length of, of investment and everything. So a two-year maturity is about, about where you want to see that. So I'm trying to stagger out our investments, the filling in some of those gap months, but that's gonna be our investment strategy going forward, is we'll have $400,000 maturing every month, and then we'll reinvest that into the following year in two years, so. So that's the strategy there, and that will help us just maintain, it helps you maintain the interest rates without getting locked into long interest rates like we were with the lower rate. So that way, it just kind of hedges your risk a little bit better. And as you can see, our average rate for this last month was 4.81%, so it's doing pretty well. Next is our debt report. Next Friday, this Friday, is our interest payment for the 3302 Prospect Loan. So we're gonna make that, that last low-interest payment, and then our next payment will be due the following quarter, and that's the only debt payment that we have due this month. And then onto the city grant spreadsheet. That is getting updated slowly but surely. Some of the dates are previous years, so it's a little hard digging those up, but we're getting there, and you can see we edited, updated some of the statuses as well. So a couple were denied since this last, since October. We have that on there. And then that is my report. Any questions?
Once again, the grant report, just because there's a denial doesn't mean it's a failure. Actually, I see that as a win, that we are in the game, and we're applying, and we're going after grants.
We're trained.
So I don't want anybody to ever think that we are upset that we have a grant denied. If anything, I applaud the staff for getting in the batter's box and swinging to the bat again, because it's, it is hit and miss, and you're gonna get denied more often than you're gonna get approved. But when you get approved, it's, it's great news.
Yes.
So don't ever, I don't ever want, I don't think any of us want you to think the staff is being held to a grant and we're disappointed with them that it's denied.
What's great is the number of grants, I want to say.
The number of grants that we're applying for, and that, that the staff is very cognizant that this is an opportunity for us to enhance our, our opportunities with this.
Yeah, and hopefully that will just continue to increase with knowledge and awareness of the grants that are out there.
And this is something new. We, we kind of do grants haphazardly, but I think it's really healthy for us now that we have a kind of a system in place and that you're, you're gonna kind of track this, because this is a measure of our success and leadership. Anything else for Andrew from the City Commission? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion for payment of the bills.
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $419,377.71, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings interviewed by the, reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Support.
So movement supported by the Finance Committee, discussion on the bills? I see you guys review those every week and always seem to ask one question, it seems. So that's, that's good that you're paying attention to bills and what's out there, so I appreciate your attention to duties.
I will also add to that comment that the responses we get are very detailed and adequate, and I appreciate that, so...
Make sure your staff knows that, Andrew, that we, we're not needling people, we just ask the question. ask the question, because that's kind of our job.
I will, thank you.
Anything else? Motion's on the table, roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, pay the bills. Moving on to item number 11, ACH funds distribution, is there a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the funds distributed by automated clearinghouse in the amount of 141,772.11, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support.
This move is supported, Andrew, you got anything here? This is standard boilerplate, I don't think there's anything.
Yeah, the, the only big thing is payroll, that's the only large amount, but yes.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, thank you, distribute the funds. Before I move on to administration, I'd like to slide in one item on the agenda here that I think is important, that we introduce one of our new, new members of the city staff. Mary, you want to, you want to step up here real quickly? We want to thank you. Adam Ellenboss is an old friend of mine, and he highly recommended you. Obviously, I didn't get involved in the selection process, but when I heard that you were the pick, I knew we had a good pick, so thank you for, for joining the city of Hudsonville, we're looking forward to a long future with you. Maybe you just want to introduce yourself a little bit to the commission, and we get to know you a little bit better.
Yeah, sure. Good evening, my name is Mary Cook. I have been in libraries over 20 years. My first job in high school was a page, I was shelving materials at 16 years old. So I knew I was slated to be part of libraries as I grew up and just learned my passion for communities, and getting involved in their input and what their needs are, and just kind of understanding where they're coming from. So you'll see, I, right now, I'm learning a lot, I'm learning what Melissa has done, and she leaves a legacy behind, and it's just an honor to be able to be part of the city of Hudsonville now, and working with all of you, and just meeting the different presidents and things like that. I have some big plans, I have some exciting visions that I will eventually share as the right time comes, but I just am very thrilled and honored to be here, and so I thank you for that. Any questions? I can go into more detail.
Where do you live?
I live in Hudsonville, in Georgetown Township, just off 36th. Yeah. We've been in the Hudsonville area for, since 2015. We used to live out in Holland before that, and I was librarian out at Hare District Library prior to that, too. Yeah, excited to be working in, within my community, it's another passion, too, so.
Any comments from the commission? Just know we are very thrilled and excited to have your leadership with our library, and we're looking forward to having you here. Melissa was a good friend of ours, and she's been here a long time, but just know that we're not going to compare you to her.
Hang on.
You're going to be your own leader and your own librarian, but we're, we're excited to have you join us.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, Mary. Andrew?
I just want to say in front of everybody, the, it was a long process, that hiring process, and I just want to thank you. Jack has been like a go-to person on our personnel committee. And then something else to note is Mary did come to our open house for the library think work tank, and that was pretty neat, too, so she did kind of get to participate in some of those things even prior to being here, so I appreciated that. The staff has been wonderful at the library, welcoming her in and making sure that she gets acclimated, and our library staff is really wonderful over there, too, so thank you most to them for this whole transition process, so.
Thank you, Andrew, very good. Anything else? Let's move on to item number 12, administration, the LED sign purchase, is there a motion?
I make a motion to authorize Postma Sign and Graphics to upgrade the city hall LED sign for the amount of 20,930.
Second motion.
This move is supported. Is anybody going to talk to us? Do you want to, huh?
If there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
I don't think any of us are surprised, I'd just like to hear a little more details about how the sign works, is it controlled by an app, can you dim it, who's in charge?
Bryn is in charge of the sign.
Brandon?
Bryn.
Bryn, oh Bryn, okay.
Bryn.
Bryn.
So, um, she does all the changes on the sign, it's a, it's a huge marketing tool for the city, gets a lot of views every day by the amount of traffic that sergeant said that goes by every day, it's, it's a huge asset to the city to have all the different events posted on that sign, we have very few avenues for advertisement, so. The sign is 14 years old, it was installed in 2009, and over the last year, we've lost three individual panels of lights throughout the sign. The first two, we were able to match perfectly, so you can't tell where they are, but the last one, I don't know if you've noticed, but on the south side of the sign, it's off, and that is the future, and it just doesn't look how it should look, so, um, doesn't bode well for the city to have a one panel a different color than the rest of them, so the panels we cannot get anymore, so this is something, if we're going to continue to use the LED, which I believe is a great asset, we're going to have to upgrade it, so.
Well, I guess you want to comment, you really, you wrote a very thorough memo here with the quotes, and your attention detail is noted, and I appreciate you taking such ownership there. Obviously, we missed a little bit on the budget, but price, everything's, everything's going up, so.
Yeah, it was bid out about a year ago, so it actually was closer than what it could have been.
Yeah, I would have to agree with you.
If there's any questions, I'll see what I got.
Any questions from the commission for, for Mike on the, the sign and the purchase? When? When's it going to happen?
I'll have to schedule it right after, tomorrow morning it'll get scheduled, so then I'll have to let you know, but, um, I just maybe yes.
Anything else? There's a motion on the floor, roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, moving on to item number 13, 2024 work session, regular session, meeting dates. This was a schedule prepared by the clerk, Jill. Once again, thank you, I know that's not an easy thing to put together sometimes, I'm looking at the calendar and get everything lined up. Our, I'll ask for a motion here first, and then we'll discuss it, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt a 2024 city commission meeting schedule as presented.
Support.
This move is supported, are there any noted changes from any of the commissioners on this? Jill, do you have anything to comment on this?
Um, your February work session date, and there's a conflict with that.
Already?
Mm-hmm, it's the election date.
So February 27?
Yes, if you want a work session, it will have to be a different date.
Okay, so noted. Why, I guess you don't want to be there, do you?
I mean, both locations are going to be kind of busy, I hope, so.
Can't change the election for our work session.
Do we just remove that date and then add one as if necessary later?
Do you want to strike it? Who made the motion?
I did.
You make the motion, once you, do you want to move to strike that then, or?
Strike that date.
Strike that work session.
Okay, or we can hold the date and move it if we need one? Wouldn't that be more appropriate, just to hold it and, and then we can move it if one is required? If not, we'll just cancel it.
Okay. Motion's on the floor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries for the work session and the regular session for 2024. Moving on to item number 14, is there a motion to nominate a mayor pro temp?
I would make a motion to nominate Tobin DeBrey for appointment of mayor pro temp.
I'll support that motion.
This move is supported, Tobin, I want to confirm that you understand that you want to be the mayor pro temp?
Humboldt would be honored, yes.
Any discussion from the dais on the mayor pro temp? For matter of record, the mayor routinely speaks the mayor pro temp probably at least twice a week to make sure that we, we make sure we connect and understand some of the dynamics going on in the city, so I do rely on the mayor pro temp immensely, and Phil is still here, he'll let you know, he got tired of me texting him at some weird hours.
I'll be sure to draw a boundary.
Thank you, thank you, Tobin. Uh, motions on the floor, roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries instantly, I did talk to Dan before he went on vacation yesterday, he's in Texas right now, I confirmed that he did support you being mayor pro temp.
I agree.
Uh, I think we need to wind down here before we're asked for an adjournment, let's just go down the dais, and we'll always start at the end there, Tobin, you're up.
I'll just touch real quick on the audit report, the, the highlights that were on page five, you've probably read them, they're very encouraging, they're big numbers, but what stuck out to me is the pattern, it was, is an uptick over the past couple of years, which I, it's a positive pattern. I think that reflects our fiscal conservative stand on a lot of things.
And property values.
Property values help, but we're also, it puts us in a position of being able to, as a commission, be offensive with our budget instead of defensive, and I think that's a blessing. Um, but I want to also be humbled with that, so we don't overspend, and stay focused on our, on our task, so, just want to encourage us to continue doing what we do. Good job, team.
Okay, nice suit.
Hey, try to live up to the standard set in the middle over there, so. I just wanted to be grateful for being able to serve on a commission at a city that values public service, so being able to celebrate Phil and Melissa and welcoming Mary, it's great to be part of a team that recognizes the work that goes into those things.
Yeah, um, I guess I'll just say that I'm excited for the future, and really looking forward to serving the city of Hudsonville. Um, I've really enjoyed my time on the planning commission, and really looking forward to serving on the city commission.
Glad to have you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Counselor?
No.
We'll get back to you, I'll let you close. Larry?
Um, I'd like to welcome Jeremy, and look forward to working with you, and the commissioners and mayor that decided to continue on, I've always appreciated each of you and, and what you have to offer, so good to see you continuing.
Jack?
Uh, welcome, Jeremy, congratulations, Tobin, full faith and confidence in you, and you'll do a great job.
Andrew?
Uh, nothing else.
Clerk?
Um, payroll stuff will go out sometime around Christmas, so, just so you're aware.
Do we, you'll send out the thing that we need to fill out online, that little app? I'd really like that, it's a nice job, whoever put that together, it's, makes it easy for all of us. Any, the department heads here still want to speak to us again? Uh, the only, I have a couple of things here, I did send a note out to the commissioners, the Michigan Association Mayor, mayors is looking for a 2025 location. I sent out a note to you, I would like to be the mayor of sponsors, I've been going for, what, eight, nine years now? Uh, it's a nice association, typically we have 40, 40 to 50 mayors show up, and it'd be nice if we for once were sponsoring, just gave a little, uh, attention to the city and little, it'd be, it'd be nice, because it's an opportunity to show the city off, and to use Terrace Square in that opportunity. Uh, so if you have some feedback on that, I'd certainly like to hear from you. Uh, one requirement I will have with the MML, MAM, is that if we are sponsored, that we open and all of our city commissioners will be available to attend that conference, too, uh, because I think it's a useful conference for us to, to gain some exposure with, with our colleagues. Um, there are some meetings next week, I'll let you talk to that. If you have input for boards, now that we're all seated on the commission, I would ask that you either call me or send me a note saying what boards and commissions you would seek to serve on going into the next term. Typically, this is an opportunity for us to have a little bit of a change of a dance card, get more people, gain some exposure, I found that when I was a commissioner, I could change, it gave me some exposure off one commission and onto another. So if you have some ideas there, please, please share those with me, and I do believe there'll be photos for us next month, is that correct? For the commission, I'm looking to Andrea, who usually, are the photo, photo?
I've not reached out to Paige yet, um, but if ever, I'm kind of waiting to see when everyone's going to be available at the meeting, which I believe was, yes, next month.
So January, we should all plan to be appropriately attired. What?
You're looking at Tobin. Look forward to it.
Okay. Um, and having that, I will let the, I think the city manager has a couple of things to add to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to give a shout out to Kurt behind the camera today, we had a WCET meeting today, um, there's a lot of equipment upgrades coming with there, and Kurt is knee-deep finding the most fiscally responsible ways to do that. Um, his team's spread out tonight, so Kurt, thanks for joining us, I appreciate everything you do to allow the folks back home to be able to tune in tonight, so thank you. Uh, late last week, I gave a shout out to staff, the wellness committee, which we're very fortunate to have, did a, you know, thankful and appreciation for fellow staff members, and the response was very positive across the board, I really enjoyed reading how our team feels about their colleagues. Equally, want to give a shout out to the staff of the city, top-down, but the department heads, we're very busy internally right now, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of challenges, but they're good challenges, so really appreciate everyone's efforts. Uh, in terms of grants, I met with Steve and Andrea, excuse me, Chief Essenberg and Andrea this past week, we're going to take another shot at the, at a FEMA grant, we are in due of a new pumper truck, we will be attending a turndown webinar to learn a little bit more about where we can score more points in this round, since we were not awarded the most previous round, but I echo Mayor Northrup's statements that we're chugging away on those grants, and look forward to taking another shot, and this will be a big one. Progressive AE and the Steering Committee for the Library and Community Center has wrapped up their phase of the project, I'm be working with Mayor Northrup on when we can get a presentation for, to bring Ken Branson and/or members of his team in here to give a presentation to the city commission on the results, it was a great group to work with, I'm very happy with the result, and at that meeting, we'll discuss next steps there, but look forward to presenting that to the city commission. Um, later this week, an RFP will go out for the city's updated master plan, we think we're be, we're going to be able to receive up to $50,000 of MEDC funding through, through the redevelopment-ready committees program, this is a budgeted item, but as such, we're looking to approach a updated parks plan, as well as an ordinance review as well, Sarah Stephenson, Dan Struck, we're, I've been working on that, and we're going to iron out a few details, and that'll go live the end of this week. There may be a need for a special meeting yet this month, I can't get any specifics as it relates to items discussed in closed session that we've cited, I'll work with Mayor Northrup and look for his leadership there on direction on where we go forward there, Andrew Smith's been great behind the scenes, but there may be need for a special meeting yet this month. And then finally, as the mayor alluded to, we have a personnel committee meeting and a finance committee coming up next week, as well as a meeting with the DDA chair. Then I've been working with the Michigan Economic Development Association on forming an economic development committee, similar to these committees, the city's very busy right now with a lot of economic development projects, and I think there's some untapped talent amongst the elected officials that, that we can dive into, and look for another communication channel between staff, the developer, and the elected official, so I'll work with Mayor Northrup on hammering out the details there, there might be some tweaks, but it's something I look forward to, at least pitching, and looking for direction and the leadership from the city commission on where we go from there. Then I'll conclude my manager's report unless there's any questions.
Uh, so Monday, December 18th, there's a DDA chairman update, 3:30 to 4:30, then a finance committee. a Finance Committee meeting update, 4:30 to 5:30, I believe Counselor, you're going to be there, too? And then, um, uh, on Wednesday, there is the Standard Planning Commission at 7 o'clock, um, Larry, you'll be seated at that still, until we determine otherwise, and there'll be an open seat then, and, uh, it will need to eventually be filled by somebody from the public, we probably should get that posted now, so we get, get somebody to serve, I think we maybe even have somebody that we've tentatively identified as a possible candidate, but we need to open up to the public. Uh, the Personnel Committee is set to meet next Thursday, December 21st, at 10 o'clock, uh, and I believe Counselor, you're there for that one, too? And that is all I show for next week, so there are those three meetings, is there anything else needs to be brought up to the commission before I ask to adjourn? And then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the City Commission.
We are adjourned.
Pro temp. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support. This move is supported, all those in favor say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.